You have the worst, you have the worst seat with the sun.
Recording in progress.
All right, let's call this public hearing to order when you're ready. Are we ready to start gentlemen? Yes. All right, so I'm going to call to order the public hearing Monday, June 2 at 5:30. I want to go through again rules of engagement and then we'll get into the actual public hearing. So for my council members, sorry, you're going to hear this at every public hearing, unless I look out in the audience and I can see that everybody's been to a public hearing. But just as a reminder on rules of engagement, the city planner will discuss the background on any item, the city engineer comments, and then legal counsel comments, but also direction. And then we will allow an applicant, is that applicant online today? I don't know, to present. And then council does Q and A to that applicant. And we're trying to keep ours, you know, just so that we can be informed in our decision making. Then we turn it over to the public hearing, which is the true purpose of these meetings is to hear from the public. And the advice to the public is, yes, you only have three minutes, but we read all of the comments that you have submitted. And we also request that the public responds to us, asks us, but directs their comments to the applicant. Now, in the public comment period, the most frustrating part of public comment is we do not engage with you. At the end of public comment, should any member of council need to make a statement or want to make a statement, they're allowed to. But the point is, there's not a back and forth in public comment, it's a listening activity. So I'm going to turn over this to the city.
Just a little clarification, but we can ask for clarifying questions, but not debate on...
We're not debating it.
We're not debating on substantive or material information.
Exactly right. Thanks for that clarification. Yes, if something doesn't make sense, we can absolutely ask for clarification, but we're not sharing none of the opinion. I'm also balancing this, some things that come in front of us need a lengthy, you know, need the two full weeks of public comment to open it. Others are actions that, A, didn't require by our charter to go ahead and have a public hearing, but we've elected to do that, that's fine, that's our discretion. Or, we're going to start to see that we have special meetings right afterwards. The reason for a special meeting related to this, and it's already been on the agenda and the public is welcome to stay through that process, there may be things that we could expeditiously respond to. And why would we wait another month or six weeks when we can actually say we're all in? But if we're not, as a majority, all in, so I say to my colleagues, well then we'll go ahead and have more public comment period. But if there's something, I'm going to use the Meadow ordinance as just an example. Planning Commission vetted it, it was only positive comments. We then had a hearing, it was only positive comments, and then we had to have a council meeting. So that process took months to say yes to an ordinance that everybody was supportive of. So I want to look at where we can be expeditious, not because speed is important, but because it just is good governance. But there are times, and I've shared to all colleagues, we've got concerns and we say we're not ready to make a decision. That's totally fine. We're the quasi judicial branch and we know from the Supreme Court down, they can decide whether they're going to rule or not. So that's our role too. Okay. With that, I'll turn to the city planner on this topic.
Thank you. So the first item on today's agenda for a public hearing is a request from the historic Lewis, the Lewis Historical Society, for requests for consideration for the consolidation of two parcels. It's file number PC-1-25, parcel consolidation 1 of 25. The properties are located at 119 West Third Street and 110 Shepherd Carpenter Street. The properties are zoned CH, which is cultural historic, and the tax parcels are mapped through 355, District 8.07, Parcel 285 and 286. What they're doing is there are two existing parcels on the property, there are two existing parcels, and the historical Lewis has owned both properties for a very long time. As they were doing an administrative site plan for the pavilion in the back, staff recommended, why don't they look at consolidating the two parcels? This would reduce some nonconformity for placement of existing parcels regarding to that center property line, because again, they don't always meet. And then during that timeframe, they realized they want to put more or less of building on that property line, which they would not be able to do without going to the Board of Adjustment. So this would provide them relief from a number of existing nonconformities, it would alleviate a number of those. And then everything on the U stays the same, the zoning stays the same, the lot coverage stays the same. I know there was concerns from the planning commission, questions were brought up about the lot coverage, but the lot coverage will remain at the lot coverage it is. And the planning commission did hear this application, they did recommend approval of the application, as long as you were, the mayor and council was given the site plan, which shows the new pavilion in the back, and then it's highlighted in a darker, if you're looking online, everybody, it's the darker, heavier line in the far corner, and then the proposed bathroom is the smaller, towards Shepherd Carpenter Street, is the proposed buildings. Those will be handled through an administrative site plan, because it's how they qualify, but it also gets you guys to know, mayor and council to understand that there are buildings coming before here, on the property as well. So again, parcel consolidation, two existing parcels staying the same, just combining to remove that property line to relieve some nonconformities on the property, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
That's good. Okay, let's go to engineer and then legal, and we can ask questions if the applicant's not here, or we can ask them directly of any of our support team.
Yes, so I've looked at the plan, all the existing utilities are in place for the two lots, so it's really just combining the two. So there are really no engineering comments after the plan review.
Okay. Thanks for doing the plan review. Alex.
Thanks, Mayor. So this is treated as a minor subdivision under the code. So technically, there's no public hearing required. We're going above and beyond having a public hearing today. But after you hear from the public, as Mayor mentioned, you can keep the record open, or you can close it right away. It'd be preferable to do that before proceeding on to the special meeting.
Okay.
And you have a few options here today. You can approve the plan submitted, you can attach conditions of approval, or if you can find a reason to deny the plan, you can point out a specific reason to deny the plan. But it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right. Questions from council to any of our city team?
I have a question. This is directed to Janelle, and you made a statement about the lot coverage staying the same, and yet, should this move forward, there will be an additional building constructed. The pavilion has already been constructed. What is actually the lot coverage calculation, should we act on this?
So, thank you allowing me to clarify. The total lot coverage percentage does not change. And as part of the parcel consolidation plan, what you're looking at right now is the site plan, what you're technically reviewing is the parcel consolidation plan, which looks much simpler. But they are both in compliance, each individual lot is currently in compliance with lot coverage. If you can give me a minute, I can double check what that is, because I've done the math.
Right. So the sum, it doesn't...
It doesn't cross over.
It does not cross over. Because one was like at 50%, one was at like 30 or 40%. So when you combine them, they are still under the maximum lot coverage percentage that is allowed by the zoning classification.
Thank you. Okay. And my next question is directed to the city engineer, GMV Andrew Lyons, and the question is, you mentioned that the utilities are existing. Are we speaking about utilities that are in the public right of way, or are we talking about onsite, and that they will be simply extending to the restrooms?
All the utilities in the public right of way that sold the property are existing. So they would just be extending their onsite utilities to the restroom.
Right. So there's not going to be, there would not have a need for an additional break into the water line, for example, or the sewer line, is that correct?
Not from the plans that I've seen.
That you've seen?
Yes.
Right.
Anything else?
No, I guess I'm going to just throw this out for, just because I can. During the last time that we took this issue up, there seemed to be some consternation that was expressed from members of the public, and I'm not quite sure if I understood what their concerns were. But nonetheless, I'm looking to Janelle, and I'm also looking to Alex. Is there something that you, as a city, as a planner, and you as our attorney, is there something that is in your craw, in your mind, that is a red flag that you would like to share with us at this time?
So something that might be helpful to know is that this is not approval of the bathroom structure.
Correct.
That's not part of this plan. That would be subject to a different review. Presumably, that would have to go through H Park. So this is just a lot consolidation.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
And from a planning perspective, I actually recommended the parcel consolidation to the applicant.
I noticed that in your narration.
I did, because I looked at the plan and go, looking at it, it has some nonconformities.
Right.
And they're both in the same ownership, they're both zoned the same, it's being used as one parcel of land.
I understand.
So staff's recommendation was, you can get rid of the nonconformities regarding the setbacks, they're the side yard setbacks, just for everybody who's keeping up with the parcel consolidation, because it removes that property line.
I understand.
So I'm not aware of anything that would be any red flags.
Okay, great. One last question, and I started this question prior to the meeting with our solicitor, and I'm drawing attention to the fact that the description of the applicant is historic Lewis, and yet the property is in the name of Lewis Historical Society, I believe. Shouldn't we have conformity with the name of the property owner and the applicant for this request?
Conformity from whom?
Well, just in our documentation, that the property owner is making the request...
They've obviously rebranded. I think you can say historic Lewis, formerly known as the Lewis Historical Society, if that maybe adds clarity.
Yeah, or also doing business as, whatever is the way that they are communicating during this branding change.
Yeah.
Right. Because, yeah, because the branded party technically doesn't have any rights here, right? I mean, just the property owner does.
That's a good clarification back for them, no matter our action. So it's, I mean, normally it's doing business as, until they've actually officially changed their name, so.
We can update that, make sure we are clear when we do this in the future. Thank you.
Other questions? Blue, you have your job?
I have just maybe a general question, why this is coming in front of us. So I can understand sometimes, but I don't really even understand, the city planner recommended, this was efficient, I'm glad it went through the planning commission, it went through the process, but it's, what I would like in the future is when things come up, that before we decide we're going to schedule a public hearing, we have a conversation, okay, about, does this need one?
Because one was not required.
Because one was not required. And so, just because it's not required, doesn't mean that we politically think it's a good idea or not. But if it's not required, but a council member could say, I know it's not required, but I'd really like one, all right, I can be sensitive to that. But it seems to me like we're adding a process step here, when it's not required.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, but I always fall back on, I really like the idea of us being as transparent as possible, and letting the community be, coming informed, if they choose to, of what is going on in our city.
Well, I think transparency is about updates, absolutely, I share with that. But we're also taking taxpayer dollars and resources to spend for another round of meetings. So I just think we should be mindful of when we actually want to convene a hearing.
I do have a question.
Okay.
So, this will come before H Park, just for the way it looks, to make it fit in, I guess. And then my question is, once it's approved by H Park, will you be able to just take care of the approvals for the structure without coming back to council?
That's a very good question, I'm processing it.
Yes. So, what mayor and council is currently reviewing and considering is the parcel consolidation. So, planning commission requested as part of their motion that mayor and council be given the site plan. You are not reviewing the site plan, as the attorney said, you're just... Blue, is there another sheet associated with this, please? Yeah, this is technically what you're reviewing and considering. It's much different, it's just the two parcels with the line in the center that says to be removed. For anything else, for an administrative site plan, it does qualify for an administrative site plan, they will go through the historical preservation, architectural preservation review commission, because it is in the historic district, and then the site plan is an administrative process, so it'll just go through staff for review.
Okay, so it doesn't come back to us?
It does not come back, it does not go to the planning commission, it does not go to mayor and council.
Okay, great. Thank you for all that clarification. So, is the applicant online, or is the applicant feels like all the facts are here in front of us?
I did speak with them this morning, and they were aware of it, I don't know if something happened. Also, to let you know, there was a question about the legal notice, what was provided to staff, does state Lewis City Council, and has the correct tax parcel numbers on it? And that was what was, they said, and we have an affidavit from the newspaper, what was sent to the property owners and to the newspaper.
Terrific. Okay. So, given that, let's open it up to the public for comments. Come forward, remember you say your name and your address, and then the clock begins, but we allow you to get to the podium and give us the basics before we turn on your three minutes.
Mary Linda Matty, 510 Railroad Avenue. I have a procedural question, as a member of the planning commission, am I allowed to ask this?
You can make a comment.
Okay.
Sure.
I approved this with one condition, that the mature trees be kept in place, and I want to be sure that that's included. Janelle didn't mention it this evening, so, okay.
Okay, thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Terry, next.
Give me some indulgence with the time, if you don't mind, because I was not really...
You know what, three minutes is what you have, but say your name and your address, but you are held under the same as every member of the citizen group.
All right, so, if I remember correctly, it was a little bit difficult to get the plan with the detail of what was going to be built brought to your attention. If I remember also correctly, I'm the one who, you know, asked the applicant if he was willing to let us insist that it be brought to your attention, and after that, I moved the motion to get this approved. So generally speaking, I haven't changed my mind. This said, the thing came kind of rushed, and I didn't have time, because I'm old, and it takes me a long time to think about things, to consider all the aspects of this. And I have a question for Janelle now. The fact that these two parcels are going to be consolidated, does it mean that down the road, if the historical society decided to pick up its little dollhouses and go somewhere else, would the property be developed any differently than being two separate properties?
Janelle, you don't answer questions, but at the end of it, we will have time to respond, but you don't answer questions.
So if you want to consider that. And my concern is this, maybe if the answer to the questions I just asked is positive, if in fact it will allow down the road the development of that property, if this historical society decides to sell it and pack and go somewhere else with their houses, then maybe in exchange for granting this indulgence to the applicant, the council might consider putting a condition or restrictions, similar to that that we have at the trailer park, whose name I've forgotten already.
Donovan Smith.
Donovan Smith, thank you. Donovan Smith, at Donovan Smith for a period of 20 years, in exchange of what has been brought to them, they cannot change the purpose of the property. So maybe the council can consider also setting a similar condition here, that for a period of years, maybe 20 years, like at Donovan Smith, or 99 years, as is the common practice in these circumstances, to actually restrict that the properties, once they have been joined, remain actually as a museum, display, whatever the current use is. And I think this is something that I would like you to debate before you make your final decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Look at that.
Second left, I yield the rest of my time.
That felt like six minutes.
Anyone else from the public? Yes, Mr. Reardon.
Dennis, I didn't plan on speaking, but you raised a question in my mind. At a public hearing, you're saying you're not going to answer questions, so if questions are submitted, are there going to be responded to at any time?
We'll take that comment, and we'll make comments at the end of this.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Bob Heffernan, 510 Railroad Avenue, and I would endorse the fact that both Dennis and Terry are old.
I think we can stop the clock on that one.
But certainly not the previous speaker, to them. I think there's a little bit of disingenuous behavior here by the Lewis Historical Society. I mean, I went to the meeting where this was reviewed, and the one drawing that Janelle just showed was looked at, reacted, you know, they were all about the setbacks on the side, and there was a general question, why? Why now? What else? Mary Linda came up with trees, but you know, there are, they could have easily answered that question. They decided not to. Both of those drawings are dated February 10.
Yep.
They knew, and for a developer or a property owner to stand up here and say, I don't know, when they know, is disingenuous. And a standard should be set that property owners, not only this one, but contractors and developers, be truthful.
Okay, you still have time?
I think I'm about done, unless I want to call somebody else on.
Thank you, Mr. Heffernan. Anyone else in the room? Blue, how about anybody online? Anyone have their, if you are online, and raise your virtual hand, we will take your comment. Okay. All right, so I'd like a little direction from Alex on this, from your previous comment. So, this part of our public hearing could be closed, hearing no other comments from the public or in the room. But then we're going to, in our special meeting, discuss whether we want to make a decision, or we want to extend the public comment period.
Exactly right.
Correct? Okay. So at this point, we just go on to the next item.
Right.
Correct. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. All right, so the next item, I believe, is really the city planners recommend, you're on the spot today, so go ahead.
Thank you. So this is an app, a proposed ordinance to amend several sections of the city code, both chapters 170, the subdivision and line development code, and chapter 197 zoning. There's two different things in this ordinance that I'm going to discuss. One is the clarification and process for a public hearing, for the notice requirement. One, it's, right now, the way chapter 170 is written, it says you're to hold a public hearing, or you have to do notice, it's not hold a public hearing, you're required to do notice for when an application is, anytime it's on an agenda. That is very confusing to the public, because that's not their time to speak and provide comment, that's the public hearing. So this clarifies that, that public notice is only required for a public hearing. So that would clean, 170 changes that for major subdivisions, minor subdivisions, parcel consolidations, and site plans. And then in 197, it changes that for the conditional use section of the code, because the conditional use section of the code also requires a public hearing, so it'd be the exact same. I did notice, there's one difference between the two that I'd please, I'd ask for your consideration to amend, is that on line, it's letter, it's number six on line 73 to 74, and it's letter F on 124. The best thing to do, because right now, it says the yellow sign is to stay up until after the mayor and council makes a decision. I think that's not really needed, it just needs to be up until after the public hearing. So once the public hearing's done, the yellow sign can be removed. Because again, the yellow sign just lets people know of when the public hearing is supposed to be. So leaving it up longer, I think, can create some confusion that, you know, there's, the public hearing has not happened yet, and it's still coming up.
Can you excuse me for interrupting? What was that line number, please? Because my 70, whatever you said, is a blank line.
Okay, let me make sure I got the...
76 on page two, is that what you were saying? You said 124.
I said 124, and then the version that's on the, attached to the agenda...
Line is 73.
Is 73 through 75. And I'd like, that number, A6...
Okay, 73 through 74, okay.
Okay, perfect. Good. And then that language would be updated to match the language on line 124.
Okay. May I make a comment? The only thing that, reason why you might want to keep that date and taking the sign down the same that I can think of is, I know sometimes we go through hearings where a person can't make the hearing, and it reminds them that they need to look at the notes and what happened at the hearing. I know we've had several in H Park, which is somewhat similar, where people go back and look. So I don't know the advantage of taking it down, I don't know why it's being changed, is there a reason why?
It's caused some confusion for some members of the public, because again, and sometimes your mayor and council doesn't make a decision for one month, two months later, but you still have a public hearing sign up on the property saying, there's a public hearing coming.
Well...
And I think that causes some confusion, because the public hearing has already happened, and then the record has been closed, typically.
Well, after the public hearing, don't we many times leave the record open for a couple of weeks, where a reminder of that sign would let people know that, yes, they still have time to make a comment? Is that...
We keep, we're trying to keep the record open as routine, as two weeks after a hearing, unless in our special meeting, we actually take action. So you could, I think what you're raising is, at the special meeting, when we decide if we're taking action, if we take action and we're all done, the sign should get removed. But if we still have opening the comment period, why not keep the sign open for that two weeks?
Yeah, it just makes sense to keep it open until the end of the comment period, just as a reminder. But I don't know, has this been problematic?
In Lewis, it can be problematic when the signs are not the most sturdiest of signs, and they will fall down, or they will blow away. So, signs, because like right now, and I want to make it perfectly clear, like after planning commission has a public hearing, because there's been a sign on somebody's property for about three years now.
Oh, it was never taken down?
Because mayor and council has not made a decision on the application yet.
So give me those lists.
Yes. Because it went up for a public hearing from planning commission, so the yellow public hearing sign technically is... So the yellow public hearing sign technically is required to stay up until mayor and council makes a decision. So there's been, in some instances, signs up for, in this one instance, three years, other instances for about six months. They, and sometimes if I notice they're not there, I will make a new sign and put it out, because mayor and council have not made a decision yet. So that's why I'm suggesting, after the public hearing, the sign can come down, because again, it can be another couple of months before a decision's actually made.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we consider, keep the sign up for two weeks, because that's our default for when public comment periods are over, and then pull it? Because then it does what Councilman Elder's saying, is it reminds people, but it doesn't put us in a situation. But then separately, any things that we have not made a decision on?
Well, now I'm concerned...
We will want to see that list at an update.
Well, now I'm a little concerned. If we have signs that have been up for six months or three years, doesn't an application expire that the sign would have to come down after a certain amount of time?
The clock for an application only starts once approval has been granted by mayor and council.
Right. Where the clock starter?
That's when the clock starts. So it can, you can be going through the process for a couple of years, and then the clock technically, in the one instance, the reason it's been up for three years, it's just the way the code, it was a weird section of code that it was following through, which has been rectified. Nobody uses that anymore.
So that makes that application null and void, I assume, does it not?
No, the public notice requirement has changed. The application is still valid because of that process. So again, we're just talking about how and when public hearing needs to be identified. And there are, just so everybody's clear, there are three components to a public notice. One is a legal ad in a newspaper of local, that is local, a letter to property owners within two-hundred feet, I believe. And then the yellow posting sign. The applicant does two out of the three. The city does the yellow posting sign, the applicant does the others, and they all have to be done fifteen days prior to a public hearing.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we move to public comment on this, and then we'll have time?
I still have, there's still part two of this ordinance.
Okay, go ahead.
Part two is, is the timeframe for conditional use.
Oh, I was just treating them as separate, but you're packaging them together, so go ahead.
It is technically one ordinance, so I just wanted to make sure.
Mayor, go ahead.
No, thank you. So what this does is removes the annual renewal date, which means the cell tower does not have to come back every year to get a new approval. The, what you just approved in the last month or so is BB using properties that require the conditional use, you don't need to see every year. But what it does is for new conditional uses, it says, "If you want to review it in a year, five years, seven years, however many years down the road, you can have it come back in a certain number of years." That's up to you. That isn't, that's, you still have the option of reviewing it in the future. It just removes the, every year, mayor and council has to see it again.
This is something that Mayor Williams was asking the city planner to correct, because he was saying, "This is kind of a waste of time, unless there's something particular."
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
So does this affect, we've had a few hearings where they've had to come back and get a renewal on their application for the whole project, because after a year, it expires?
No, that's not related to this.
So this is, this is limited, what, right now, and staff is working on an ordinance with city manager and the city solicitor on looking at when and how long things, subdivisions and site plans will expire. This is specific to conditional uses. Conditional uses are in the zoning code, and they're uses that are primarily make sense for the zoning, but they go through the public hearing process. And right now, it says every conditional use has to be renewed annually, renewed and reviewed by a mayor and council on an annual basis to maintain that conditional use. And all this does is removes that annual renewal. But if mayor and council, if they see a conditional use, and it's like, well, maybe we need to see it in like five years.
Can I ask another question? Does the conditional use transfer with the sale of the property?
The conditional use runs with the land. Conditional uses, so if, I'm trying to think of a good conditional use. If I have retail in the open space, which is just a conditional use in the open space, and I own it, and then I have that conditional use, and I sell it to the city engineer, and he runs it for another five years, it runs with the land. But if I sell that property and somebody says, "Oh, I don't want to do retail anymore. I'm going to permitted use," the conditional use expires.
Okay.
If the condition, if the use ceases for a certain timeframe, the use ceases, and it, any for you to use has to comply with the zoning code, or they come back with a new conditional use application.
Okay, thanks for that clarity. All right, let's open it up to the public. Anybody in the room that would like to make a comment about this? Because you want to, or you feel like you have to? Go right ahead. Say your name again, please, for the record.
Terry Corrie, again, still in talk of your word. On the conditional use, I think, I like the idea that when a conditional use has been granted, the city council or the planning commission, whoever periodically has to look into it. Maybe every year is too often, but, but I think if it is never looked at, eventually, we're going to forget that it is a conditional use. And if it's something that, for some reason, doesn't fit very well in the atmosphere of the city or whatever, we're going to lose this opportunity to revisit this. So I think maybe you want to consider three years or five years or something like that, but not zero. I don't even remember what the first topic was, remind me of it.
Public hearing notice.
Oh, yes, the public hearing.
No, that's fine. That was clarification. You're allowed to do that. And he's allowed for that clarification.
Do I have to use the same three minutes for the two of them? I don't answer that question. On the, on that, I think, as long as the public is still allowed to enter comments into the record, and I know that from one of the properties, it was three years. It may have been the D A or something else, but during that period, the public could actually still enter comments into the records, right? Because it had, it has not been heard. That placard serves as a reminder to newcomers or to even people who have been here for some times, that, hey, you know, if I have something to say about this, I can still, I can still say it. So it's not completely useless. At the same time, I, you know, I understand the concern that, you know, you have this placard in the wind blowing, and you have to put it back. But, but I think it's useful for us to be able to know that there is something here which is not closed. And in the particular case of the D A, I got interested in what was going on in this property by bicycling in front of it and seeing the sign, you know, with... And I, and I noticed that the deadline was expired. And, but at the same time, the sign was still here, and I inquired, and I realized that actually, this was not a closed case, that it was still going to come up. So let's be careful about, you know, removing it entirely. I like the idea of keeping it for two weeks after. And an alternative would be for actually the council to decide at their, this, their meeting, "Well, we're going to keep the sign up for two weeks," or "We're going to keep it for a month," or whatever, to match the comment period that you decide to extend forward.
Great. Thank you for your comment. Yes, Mr. Reardon?
Again, Dennis Reardon, thirteen-O-two Bay Avenue. As a conditional use thing, I really think it's a wise move, in particular with BB Hospital, they've got about four trailers over there, and they have to come in every year and get another renewal, one year at a time. It's not going to stop, and that's a situation where I think this would be really helpful.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? Blue, how about online? If you're online and you'd like to make a comment, raise your virtual hand. No? Okay. Thanks, thank you very much, everyone, on the comments on all of this. So Alex, if we close the hearing at this point, and we move into the special meeting, and if we decide, you gave us different options. If we decide on any one of these that we're going to act right now and be done, then there were comments made here that we hear, and that we factor in our decision-making, but probably it's not very satisfactory to the people who are here, because we haven't, like, spent a lot of time. On the other hand, if we decide to extend it for, for two weeks, I can't close the hearing, because I'm extending it. So my procedural question is, how do I move into a special meeting? Do I just keep that hearing open for twenty minutes more and then make the action? That's the, you know where I'm caught. Yeah.
Exactly. So there's a public comment requirement for every meeting. So at the special meeting, there will also need to be a public comment period technically.
Yes.
For this meeting, you can decide whether you would like to keep the record open for either matter, the legislative matter we just discussed, or the merger of lots before that. And then, at that point, you can close the meeting. Technically, there's a new meeting for the special meeting, which has its own public comment requirement.
And so in the special meeting, even if I'm closing the meeting, in the special meeting, should we want to have the public comment? We can then do that in the special meeting. Okay, okay.
And just one more thing.
Wow, that's not Robert Schule's water, that's in the...
Sorry, just trying to comply with FOIA.
Yes, absolutely.
For Janelle, you suggested edit. I just want to make it clear, that was on line seventy-four. And instead of the existing language, you're thinking something like, "Such notice shall not be removed before the public hearing, comma, or the end of the written comment period imposed by council, whichever is later." Something like that.
Something like that, but I would have the reviewing agency, so we can take the Planning Commission sign down and put up a new one for mayor and council, so the Planning Commission one doesn't have to stay up. It can, but it'll stay up through the public comment period. Because I, I had something, "Shall not be removed before public record closed by reviewing agency."
I would rather not draft that on the fly.
No, I don't like ordinances drafted on the fly. It's the intent and direction, but we can give you direction to do those. Go ahead.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
When you speak about agencies, are you thinking only this, you know, the local government? Or are you thinking also possibly state agencies?
No, it would just be, who am I, it'd be the Planning Commission or mayor and council, because those are the only two holding the public hearing. So I just wrote "agency" because I was trying to redo it quickly, so...
And I'm just being very attentive to word choice, because it makes a difference. And it adds to the confusion by having used that word. And I'm going to admonish our good counselor here, too, because he commingled the word "meeting" when I think he meant "hearing." Because in fact, this is the hearing, and we have to, we have to draw this hearing to a close to go into the special meeting.
Correct.
And that, that's very important, that we keep that delineation and start practicing those words.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I make a motion?
Also, the reason I'm suggesting this ordinance change, because...
Yes, exactly. It's driven by that.
No, it's good.
Yes.
Can, but I think we need to close this part of the public hearing. Do you feel like it's relevant to the, because we're going to go into the special meeting?
No, I know we want to go to special meeting, but I, we have not had a chance to speak about this document. We spoke about the other B-one, but we haven't spoken about this. We, I mean, we haven't, you...
Well, that's what we would do in the special meeting. That's exactly what we'd be doing in the special meeting.
So all you'd be doing right now is closing or leaving the record open for public comment? And if you close one of them and then move into the special meeting, then you'd be discussing one or both of the topics. Does that help?
Oh, I understand that part, but we did, the chair did allow us to ask questions for B-one regarding the Historic Society's property.
And we did ask, well, there were questions on, and we did that for B-two as well. People asked time, but go ahead. If you have some, go ahead. Sure.
Yeah, I do have a question I would like to ask, okay? Thank you. First of all, I, I understand and can appreciate what is being accomplished by this proposed change. The one thing that I, there are two points that I'd like to make. One of them is, there is no language in this ordinance that suggests that the city has any responsibility with respect to posting the date, a post-date for a hearing. And there's nothing to suggest that we have an obligation to fulfill, as it relates to, for example, a fifteen-day or two-week period prior to a hearing. And was that an intentional omission, or what was, is there a reasoning behind that?
Go for it, Alex.
So currently, the applicant has to post...
I understand that.
And we're not modifying that.
I, yes, but do we have any responsibility to support a notice that is posted in the field to also have on our website a document, a statement, that supports what is put in the field? So in other words, if the posting in the field says, and it's required to be posted fifteen days, whatever it is, yeah, fifteen calendar days prior to the date of the hearing, it seems to me that our website should support this hearing date, the purpose, documentation, et cetera. Is there a reason?
Right, so right now, the applicant is required to provide proof of the public hearing notice to the city planner. I don't believe there's anything that speaks to the website. You know, it might be a relic of the past, that this code was written before the website was around. So I'm not aware of any website requirements, Janelle, if I may know.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, and please let me know if I'm getting this, is, public notice has to be done fifteen days ahead of time, but we don't post the agenda until seven days?
Correct.
Yes, because the way state code is written is that pub, and some of this is following, the fifteen days is coming from state code. Is that state code says you have to notify fifteen days in advance, but then state code says you publish your agenda seven days in advance.
But it doesn't say that it can't be published prior, more days than seven?
Correct. That could, so that is actually like a weird thing for Board of Adjustment, which is why we're not touching the Board of Adjustment public hearing rules, because I'm just trying to get at least some consistency in public notice, is that when a Board of Adjustment application is made, we actually have to, fifteen days, post the legal notice on the bulletin board.
Right.
Then seven days, we post the agenda.
I understand.
So it sounds like you kind of want to do what the Board of Adjustment does, and post on the bulletin board, saying, "Hey, there's a public hearing coming up?"
I just think redundancy is a good, would be a good practice here, so that we have, you know, the burden is, I recognize the burden that's put on the applicant. I understand that, and I, I realize that's a, an ordinance-driven practice or, or demand placed on the applicant. I'm just asking, if we are posting, if the property owner is fulfilling his obligation, there's a notice in the paper, there's a notice, the, the yellow sign is posted on the property, it seems to me that if people are curious, you know, that yellow sign draws attention to itself, and people want to learn more about it, it seems to me that it would be logical that our website would support that curiosity by possibly, you know, providing information.
But it will seven days out, correct?
It will seven days out.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just trying to...
Yep.
You're trying to lessen the gap.
Well, why would there be any gap? What is the purpose of a gap? You know, if a person is driven to the website on the fourteenth day prior to the hearing, or the twelfth day, or even the eighth day, and there's nothing on the city website, are we, are we fulfilling our...
Well, I'll speak at that. I mean, I...
Are we doing our best?
I'm not sure. Look, when we post things seven days out, routinely, the documentation that supports it changes enormously. Sometimes it's not posted on the seven days, but the issue is certainly posted. So I would be, I mean, if you're sug, I would be skeptical of suggesting that fifteen days out, we have to post the notice of the hearing as well as all the information about that hearing on fifteen days versus seven days out.
I don't know. May I respond to that?
Sure, of course.
I don't know how any applicant could be scheduled for a hearing if the documentation is not set, if it's not received, and if it has not been reviewed for compliance, so that in fact, it is a, you know, it's not subject to change at that point in time by the applicant. It should, in other words, if it's incomplete...
I'm not interested in micromanaging how this works from a, from a process perspective. If, if the city manager and the city planner decide that this is, you know, it's not going to create too much more work, and it's not going to be, I mean, you use your word, redundant, you know?
I think, I think perhaps the compromise, because we've all... I, I think, I think perhaps the compromise, because we've often had, it's just you said, we've often come to agenda, and there's a new thing that's coming in. So I think what we could do to consider is that the fifteen days that the applicant has, then on the city side, it's as soon as possible, but no later than one week before, okay? So that, that follows our order. It allows, you know, it's hard to pull, it's, the applicant's responsible, but then we have lots of pieces to do on lots of different agenda items. So let's give city council, city management, a little bit of...
It also gives staff a little bit more time, because staff is trying to do a staff report for every agenda item.
Yes, exactly.
Fifteen days, it's not always possible. And the good thing is, usually by the time a public hearing has been identified, each application typically has its own webpage. Now, the, the public notice does not identify that webpage, nor provides that link, because they're complying with their state, with the, the requirements that, hey, you've got a public hearing going up. And most of them do say, if you have a question, because I usually review most of them, and I say, call the city planner with questions? So I can get them to that, that webpage, so they can see all the documentation that's been submitted.
I mean, the main, the main purpose of the signs, like how H Park did, is it's yellow and it says, "Alert." Something's going to happen on this property. And so when I walk by those, I just put the date in, like, okay, if that's something I'm interested in as a citizen, then I know when I'd have to come to a, to a hearing, or whatever is the activity. So, but, so I think we can, maybe we can find a comment.
All right, I have another question I'd like to ask. And it has to do with the format of the public notice that's published in the newspaper. And my question is this, is that I think it might be helpful if we standardize what that format looks like. Possibly, this is, I'm throwing this idea out. I don't know if there's a legal, a legal issue with this or not, but something, I'm thinking possibly the use of the city seal, making that available for its use in the notice. And, and I can understand the conflicting signal that sends, but if you look in, when you look at the public notices in the newspaper, what stands out for me when I'm looking at those notices? And when I, and I try to do this every time I open the paper, I scan, and if I see the city seal or the city of Lewis thing, but the city seal, it stands out. And I go, wait a minute, let's see, what, what's that about? You know, and, because otherwise, you have public notices from any other town. You have, you know, auction notices or public notices, et cetera, et cetera. You know, executors who are posting notices of decedents who...
Quick question, are you referring to notices placed not by the city, but by the applicant?
Correct, so, right.
Yeah, well, I would be a little concerned about putting our, our, our logo on that in...
I understand.
Any kind of liability or any issues that, you know, that we have no control over.
And I, and I appreciate that completely. I just would like to see something, something that would draw attention, that this is a notice that is applicable to the city of Lewis.
And I think we can, on a policy standard, because most people do actually ask me to review their legal notice, I can start, put like a, you know, format together, just it's a little bit more standard. Not everybody asks me to review it, most people do, and I'm always happy to do that for them. And then I can, we can come up with a, a set standard to use in, as the legal notice, without the seal.
Without the seal, though, I think the format's a great idea.
It was just an idea.
Maybe you can put the city of Lewis in larger font, that, that way.
Without our seal, right, exactly.
I have a, a comment and a question. I, I believe it would be appropriate here. When we leave the record open for two weeks, for people to make comments, then we have a meeting following that, either a council meeting, or it goes back to the planning commissioner or something. Is there a deadline by which the comments have to be posted so that the committees get those back in a timely manner, so they can review them without having to rush?
So our, our deadline...
Because some of the information that's uploaded is very, very important.
So for us, I'm not speaking for any commission, but for us, when we decide that we want to keep the public record open, when we decide that, okay? So tonight, we may decide to or not, depending on the, on the item. It's fourteen days from the date of the hearing at four o'clock. And then we're asking legal counsel through their paralegal to actually put a package together for us that says, you summarize, for example, you receive seventy-two comments, just a little bit of analysis for us, so we're not starting all over again. That is not making any legal statement, it's just saying, you had twenty-two people who were completely in favor, we had ten against, these were the key issues. Something so we can have a little more critical thinking that comes to us, a better briefing book.
So is there a timeline on when that has to be posted prior to our meeting, so that, so we have plenty of time?
Our goal, Ellen Lorraine's goal and mine, is that we're going to try to get things by the Thursday, so you don't have your whole weekend. We're trying to do Thursday before a council meeting, that we would try to get you all the things that we need, because I know sometimes we're walking in and we're just hearing it for the first time.
I, I, I don't think that's long enough for some committees, for example, the planning committee, they get embroiled in a situation and...
Joe, this is just our, this is our, every, every committee chair owns the agenda that he or she sets, and they can work that. This is, I'm just trying to get it for us, okay?
Just, just a thought.
But it's a good thought for ex officios, in terms of talking to their committee chairs on what that process is. Okay, so what I would like to do, I mean, with council's agreement, I would like to close this hearing, and then I would like to open the special meeting.
So I'll make a motion that we close this section of the meeting.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
Great, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Are you in favor?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm in favor of closing the hearing, not the meeting.
Closing the hearing, thank you for that good clarification. Okay, so now, the hearing as, for these items is closed. Now we're going to move into a special meeting. So I call the special meeting of the mayor and city council for June second open, as of, what time is it?
Six twenty-six.
Six twenty-six. And what we're, yes, we're going to, yes, we're going to do it right now, sorry, yes. So because, so what I'm going to propose is, I think that the comments that came in from the public before and here are digestible, and so if we could discuss those, we might be able to take action on these items. But as we go through them, if we feel like, nope, we need to open up the public comment longer. So at this point, let's discuss the items, let's take it one at a time, and we, so we'll start with the first one, with LHS. The concern here was the condition the planning commission put on to make sure that the mature trees are protected. In, I assume that meant in construction, as well as not cutting them down?
So, you'll never be able to tell them they can't cut their trees down, but it was to attempt to keep the mature trees as long as...
To keep the mature trees, but also in construction, we know that we have under our city ordinance that the laydown area...
They will have to be protected during construction, yes. So that was one of the, the conditions, is to keep the mature trees. And then the second was to get a copy of the site plan for your, for your consideration.
Which, which, and those were the only conditions the planning commission gave us.
Can I ask a quick clarif, is there a definition of a mature tree? I mean, I think I, it, it's like obscenity, you know when you see it. But I know what a mature tree is, but is there, I'm just curious, are there definitions?
There's probably a generic, a generalized definition. I do not believe there is one in the city code that I'm aware of. I'm going to do a quick search.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I know a brand new tree, when, we can see it.
Sure. So we, do you have a definition of a large tree? So in chapter one seventy-seven, there's a definition of a large tree that shall be selected to be any tree exceeding forty-five feet at maturity. And then there's a, actually, there's a medium tree shall be... Yeah, there's no definition of a mature tree, there's a definition of large tree, and one that's at maturity, and based on the, the tree type.
I was just curious.
Yep.
So is there something that we can say that should a tree, just related to this application, should the applicant have to take down a tree, that they should give the city planner and city manager warning, because there might be something that could be done? So basically, what we're trying to do is keep the mature trees, I'm sure the applicant is too. Nobody knows what mature is, you know, the height of a tree is, its lifespan. But it's, I think where the public gets very concerned is when all of a sudden, things are just cut down, and like, did everybody know this? I know private property has its own rules, but just that awareness, because sometimes there are alternatives, and maybe every applicant doesn't know what that alternative is.
May I ask you a question, Janelle, please?
Sure.
In your, in your conversations with LHS regarding their plan, their requests, their plan to build the restrooms, did they share with you that trees were in, were likely to need to be removed?
There were no trees proposed to be removed as part of the administrative site plan. One, the existing bathroom, the proposed bathroom is next to the existing bathroom. There's a little outhouse, I believe. They're just going to build it right next to it, kind of make it look like it, like the exact same, just bigger and ADA compliant. There are no trees that I'm, I'm triple checking right now, but I'm not aware of any trees needing to be removed for that.
I know the other site plan, blue, excuse me, this plan that shows the buildings, okay? I believe it shows some trees, you know, they're drawn in there in circles and so forth.
So it looks like the proposed...
But I don't know if that's intended to, you know, just the current status, or if that's the result of after construction.
That is their proposed, it does look like it might, one of, a corner of the proposed building might be within the drip line of one of the existing trees. But they can, you can still do some construction in the drip line, and the tree will still be okay. So they just need to make sure they take extra caution when they're doing construction, which is a code requirement.
And, and the applicant's rationing to come forward besides the parcel, which is the only thing we're really ruling on, is need for handicapped facility, correct? They have a lot of school, they have a lot of trips that come in, but they have a lot of school trips that come and visit, and they've been seeing that need.
Yes.
So under H Park, going back to Councilman Ritter's comment on the trees, when H Park reviews this, does H Park have any authority to look at the landscape, the mature landscape, I'm just asking the city planner then?
They, they have control of the streetscape, not the landscaping.
Yeah.
But they can make suggestions and recommendations. But they, they cannot tell somebody they have to save a tree or not.
But we can, not a condition, but we can communicate via our ex officio on H Park that council's concerned about this, we heard it from the public, so be thinking about all of that.
They have made comment on some large trees on a property that was being looked at, and they're very sensitive to that. But I would like to also add that the historical society is very cautious with the trees on the property. They've gone to great extremes to make sure those trees are healthy right now. You know, that if you go there and you talk with them, they're very proud of those trees, and I'm sure they're going to be good stewards of those trees.
The other comment or feel that came from the planning commission's hearing on this application was, what else are they planning to do? So the, the, looking at lot coverage was addressed, and you've handled that, but my question is not to ask you, what are they planning to do? Because that's not what's in front of us, I'm just asking, given that the public had that concern, what's the process? So should they want to put up five more buildings? And assuming they meet lot coverage, every time, they would have to come in front of planning commission? And us, or tell me, tell me that, because that was a, that was an underwrite, a concern that the public had.
So it, it depends, there are different levels of site plans. So right now, this qualifies because it's three hu, the proposed bathroom's three hundred and twenty square feet. It doesn't meet the level of requiring a full site plan. It goes through the administrative site plan. However, because it is in the historic district and it's a new building, it will have to go through the histor, through H Park for their review, and they do take public comments.
Okay, that's great. I mean, that gives me the confidence, as a member of council, that there's another group who's going to look at that.
There's a little layer.
So I, I don't have any more issues. Anyone else have any more questions or issues on this?
I, I don't, can, can we, do we have consensus that we can approve this?
I think we could take a motion, we could take a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we approve this application.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now, any further discussion about approving this?
May I ask a clarifying question? Would that be with the condition that LHS needs to notify the city when they look to remove any mature trees to look at other options?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, there was another comment or suggestion that was made by a member of the public who, who spoke before us, and I believe he made this suggestion, Mr. Paray made this suggestion about the change in purpose. Do we want to include that?
I'm not comfortable with that, frankly. I think it's a good thought, but I hope that organization outlives me, and...
I don't know if it's germane to what's in front of us. That's where I'm, I mean, I get the concept and I can appreciate it.
So I think also, another factor to consider is it might be difficult to enforce. In Delaware, land records are held at the county level. So if this was to be approved, there would be a, a, a plan reported with Sussis County. Sussis County would see it as one lot. And then even if we had a condition that said twenty years later, it's two lots again, Sussis County might say, no thanks, so it's not solely a city's decision.
Got you, okay.
And I, my feeling too is, we, we haven't done this to any other organizations, and this is one of the organizations that brings so much to Lewis. And I just feel that it, it would create a bad sentiment, and it's just not a path that I feel is a good idea to go down.
It does feel a bit like a lack of trust, in a precedent setting, because then you put on every, right?
It, it's a good thought, I understand it, but I just don't think at this time it's...
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, so, so the motion that's in front of us is, that we're discussing, is to accept it with the amendment or adding the condition of alerting the city planner and the city manager if there's any, does, any need on their part to cut down a mature tree prior to them cutting it down. That's the only condition that we're placing. Okay, are you guys, any other comments? If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous, hearing no objection, it's approved. Okay, now let's move on to the second. And so that public hearing does not have to have any further public comment, because we made the decision today. Okay, on the second item, those are, that the city planner raised. Let's, let's start, let's, another brief, just very brief conversation, if not, we'll move to a motion, but then we need to address, so, let me start differently. In the conversation, let's go with the notification. I think Mayor, Mayor Williams was moving in this direction to say, why are people keep coming and talking to us all the time? So I like the idea that anytime we approve something, we put a timing in to say, you need to report back three years from now, five years from now. I mean, what have you seen in the past? All I've seen is everybody's coming up with every year, and we just say yes.
So the way the ordinance is proposed, is you get to make that decision on a case-by-case basis for each conditional use.
Okay.
So, like, the one, like, BB would no longer have to come forward, and the cell tower would no longer have to come forward every year. But any new conditional use, you can go, maybe we should see that every three years. Or we want to see it in three years, and then we'll make a decision if we need to see it again. So you can do that on an individual case, case basis, yes.
I want to ask a question to clarify something that you've just said. Isn't it, wouldn't, isn't it true that BB and the Selco company, the cell tower company, if they've already come through, and I think most of them have, if I remember correctly, for this calendar year, wouldn't they have to come through again next year, and then at that point in time, we would extend?
That's correct, yep. So the next time, if this was adopted in its current form, next time would be their final time, unless council wanted to set a specific timeframe.
Right.
This gives you flexibility to attach a timeframe if you'd like to, but you don't have to.
Right, but we can't be, we, we can't, we can't date a document that, or change the terms that are already in place.
But, but can we say that if they came in front of us in calendar year twenty twenty-five? Or no, you're just saying they have to come back in one more time? And then... Or no? You're just saying they have to come back in one more time, and then we set it?
Yeah.
Right. Can I make a comment, just a suggestion rather, in the name of, you know, saving city resources as well as efficiency? What if the city planner, every, has a record of all the various conditional uses and reviews them on an annual basis, just within her office? And if there is, if he or she determines that there is an issue or a potential need for a public hearing or a conversation, we, we are alerted. Or we're just alerted, hey, BB's four homes are, you know, does anybody have any concerns about it? Has anybody heard any concerns? And, and if not, then it gets extended administratively.
I, I think the conditional concern, the conditional use on the tower, I felt was a little bit different. And I raised a question at that time, asking if, when those come up that we get funds from, don't we get some sort of a fund, some, some monetary yearly amount from them?
No.
No.
The BPW may, because I think it's attached to the, to the water tower, but I, I'm, the city manager said the city was not.
Well, my question was related to, is that a time when you ask if they will up the ante a little bit?
I don't think it's a negotiation time. But I do, so go back to the deputy mayor's proposal. Leaving this to the city manager and city planner, and then you alert us. Or you could even just put it in a, in a council meeting. These five have come up, hearing no other issue, we're just extending them. So we're informed. That's the main thing we want to know, is be informed. We just don't want this groundhog feel, right?
Right. Again, the use is gonna live on with the property. So does, the uses live on through, the use stays with the property. So when the use ceases, the use ceases, and we can let you know when a use ceases. But having to track-
That's the perfect way. No, just do, when the use changes, then it's a whole new ball of wax. But I like what the deputy mayor is saying, put it on the consent agenda. It's just, it's a routine administrative, and you're just telling us.
I'd like to bring to your attention that I believe in Sussex County, when a property transfers, the conditional use, I believe, does not, because I think I lost a conditional use on a property and now need to reapply. So I know it's handled differently in different places. I would suggest that you look at that issue. I don't know why they would do it and why we wouldn't do that.
I don't know the answer to Sussex County.
So I can speak from past experience that conditional uses run with the land. Everywhere I've worked in, in the state of Delaware, conditional uses run with the land. Sometimes they, they, if they cease, again, for a certain timeframe, and every jurisdiction has their own timeframe as to when a use ceases, that conditional use is now gone. So then you would have to reapply, and that's typically what the process is. So like, the building might still be there, say, if like it was an office building and the conditional use was for an office, and then they left and it went to a restaurant. They cannot go back as the office. They'd have to reapply for a conditional use because the use has ceased.
Okay.
Right. And some municipalities have a rule that if a building sits for X number of, like a year and a half, without that conditional use in it, it automatically becomes null and void.
Correct. The, the conditional use ceases after six months, 18 months.
Do we have that?
We do. That's already in code, and we are not changing that.
Okay.
Okay, so I understand it's just one agenda item, but it feels very much like two to me. Okay, conditional use versus notice of publication. So I'd like to treat them as two separate actions, if that's okay? I think it'll be clear, clearer for the public and clear for us. So do I have a motion on accepting the conditional use proposal as presented by the city planner? And with any of the conditions we've discussed? I need a motion on that.
I would ask for clarification what those conditions are.
Okay, well, the, well, maybe it will translate as direction, which is, okay. I mean, I'm not wanting to, me as mayor to, to make the motions, but what I think we're discussing here is a motion that is addressing what you've identified, but it's also saying that the consent agenda is the tool. We're directing staff that the consent agenda is for the continuing of the same use. And so it can be placed on the consent agenda. It does not need another approval action outside of that, unless the use changes.
So from a staff tracking perspective, staff would prefer they run with the land. And if there's a complaint or an issue, it comes back to mayor and council. Or when it ceases, it can, it can be notified to council.
That's fine, that's fine. It does make sense, but I'm just thinking in the case.
Because otherwise, I'm tracked, because BB technically is over three different months is when they got their conditional uses. And then the cell tower is in February or March. So it's like, I, tracking them is, is been not always the easiest of things.
Well, that's, that's an interesting point going forward. Why, why aren't conditional uses of institutional properties organized in a way that it's on the-
Because it's count, it's based on the date on which it was first extended.
I know, but we're saying that as soon as they come in front of us, we could start to put them in in some kind of orderly fashion. Yeah.
Well, again, it's all from the approval date.
No, I understand that. But it's our approval date when they come in front of us, and we could decide so that we don't have to go back and forth all the time.
Would it be harmful to, I know we want, we'd like to approve this now, but it, it sounds like a lot of things have been discussed. Can Janelle just tighten this up and then bring it back? And we have a quick approval at a council meeting, so that she makes sure that all the wording is right? It just seems like there's a lot that's transpired.
I mean, I'm willing to make a motion, and if, and if, and if it doesn't fit or we're missing something. I mean, I'd make a motion that we, that conditional uses become part of the consent agenda unless the use has changed, or the city planner has received complaints or feels there are other reasons why this should not be included in the consent agenda.
That makes sense.
So just for clarification, that's not what this ordinance says. This ordinance, I'm just making sure everybody's under, on the same page. This ordinance says you no longer have to come back, there's no more annual revisit of the application.
Right.
Of a conditional use?
Of the conditional use. There's no more annual revisit. And my understanding, and I'm just asking for clarification, is that you still want to see it every year on a consent agenda?
I thought that's what we had talked about, because we didn't want to lose track of it.
Right.
But we're not gonna, but if it's on the consent agenda, it's gonna be part of 99-year leases and other things that will simply get approved.
That's a good idea.
So the staff has a record of the conditional uses, and we have the files. They just don't go away. It's just, it's like every conditional use ever in most of the other places in the state is, it stays with the land. So I have a GIS layer of all the conditional uses in the city, so I know where all the conditional uses are.
How many are there roughly?
Yes, what are we, one question?
There's the cell tower, and then there's the, the four for BB.
So five things we're talking about.
Yeah, we're not talking about.
Okay.
And then anything that's coming forward. And we do have a couple few that are coming forward, and may others may come forward. But again, the intent was to get rid of the annual review and the annual renewal of the conditional use.
Okay, so for five properties, you want to change your motion?
Yeah.
Because it sounds like you want, if there's a concern, or when the use ceases, you want to be notified. Am I getting that correct? But do you want to see it on an annual?
The only reason, I mean, I'll just speak for myself.
I'm just trying to make sure.
If there's a problem with the conditional use, or the conditional use ceases to exist because of a change in the, in the use.
That's what we need to know.
Yeah, that's all. I'm looking.
Right.
And I was just, I mentioned the consent agenda because I thought there were some concerns about transparency and, and other things.
We can make that happen, have it appear on the consent agenda, because year after year, we would just pull the prior year agenda, and we could-
And you just put it on the agenda, okay.
So that is possible.
That's possible, but as, as the city planner is saying, this was really to say, we don't have to do that anymore.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you, exactly what you were trying to do.
Right.
Because I think what you really want to do is, if we receive a complaint, you want to hear about it. Which means we're, we're not waiting a year to get it onto the agenda. We're hearing a complaint, we're bringing it to you as soon as we can. Or when the use ceases, because I've had the situation where they weren't in compliance with their conditions of approval. So, and it wasn't here, it was somewhere else. They weren't in compliance with the conditions of approval. So it had to go back to planning commission, mayor, council, so-
That changes things for me a little bit.
Which you have in code already, so if there's an issue.
So let's, let's withdraw the motion and let's-
Yeah, I withdraw the motion and, and simply move, move that we accept the proposal as is. And, but it doesn't mention, but with, with the requirement that the city planner notify us if there is a change in the use or a substantial complaint.
We can do that.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any other further discussion on that? No? Okay, go for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, passes. Okay, now let's go to the other part of this one, which was all about the public notice. And I need some clarity, Mr. Reardon, can I ask Mr. Reardon to come back up again? Would you mind just coming back up again? I want to make sure that we've addressed, yours was a pretty broad comment, and I want to see how best we could address that.
What, at public hearings like this, oh, yeah, Dennis Reardon, 1302 Bay Avenue. Public hearings like this, or when a committee recommends something, when does the public that haven't been involved in that get to ask questions?
Right.
So I mean, at a public workshop, you can. But at a, at a public hearing, if you're saying you can't ask questions, when was, when was, is the public able to do that?
Right, okay, so thank you for coming back and reinstating, restating your question. This is generic to anything we're looking at. So if we keep the public comment period open, to me, that's addressed, because we look at all those questions, and that factors into our decision-making. And then our ruling addresses them. But it's not that interactive part. But if we come to a meeting, a special meeting, when we're deciding like we just did, then it behooves us, all of us around this table, to say, but this is what the planning commission said. So we're, we're gathering it, and we're doing our synthesis in one meeting, like we just did for the prior item. But the interaction with the public, so we have to take the temperature of the public. We have to say, there were so many comments today that are not yet answered, or our ordinances, we don't want to write ordinances on the fly. So in that case, even though we have a special meeting, I would think all of us as colleagues would say, too many comments here to take action tonight. We need to keep the record open. And then we deliberate. So the next time we would deliberate, we would factor in all of those activities. Now, that does not limit anybody from asking a question and directing that to the city manager or city planner for clarification. I just don't want to get into the back and forth in the public comment period.
Well, you know, I think what Dennis is saying is, is that when are those questions answered? And many times when we, and I've, I've sat on, in some meetings where there were a lot of questions answered or asked online. And then we got to the council meeting, and we never really addressed those questions. In fact, we read them prior to, but then we started discussing between ourselves and made a decision. And some of the questions were difficult to answer, but we, we don't really answer.
That's part of the analysis that I'm asking our city solicitor to do. So when the paralegal comes, puts together the package, they say, here are the specific questions. And we have to deliberate and say we've answered those. You're not, you're not having an interaction, except the workshops. Workshops, totally. Yeah, sure, because this is a new governance practice, so I'm, I think we need to-
I think this is terribly important, because there have been ordinances raised that affected the beach. And we asked questions, and they never got answered.
Yeah.
And decisions were made without answering questions. And it's really difficult to sit there and feel like you're part of the process when a question, a legitimate question is not getting answered.
And if I, if I may, I know sometimes we've even gone to the point where we've held another meeting or had another speaker talk to a group to try and answer those questions. But we've never really dealt with them as counsel directly. We've, we've worked the system, but we haven't really, and then we've had to have more workshops and things.
But remember that we're in a, there's a difference in our quasi-judicial role versus interaction. And we've got to stay in our lanes at the right meeting. I'm not trying to be so bureaucratic. I'm wanting to answer questions, please know that. But it's, when is the right time to do it? So we, I think we handled the conditional use piece pretty well, because we were understanding it's pretty administrative. But, but on this part of it, I would say, we've got some comments here. Are we, are we ready, or should we actually bring this forward to another meeting? And it can be a workshop with action, too.
I mean, I'm not talking about tonight.
No, I know, you're doing a broader-
I just mean in general.
Yeah.
And it's very frustrating to, and I'll give you a really good example. We were here on one of our environmental things, and Brett got up here and sat there for 45 minutes talking. And that, we never heard a lot of what he said at our meetings. And I had questions, and we weren't able to ask any questions for clarity on what he was saying.
Yeah.
Somebody, ordinances, you, you don't understand them, you want to, you want to support it. But if you don't understand it and you want clarity, how do you get that done?
Yeah, and I like that done personally. I like it at a workshop, because that's when we talk to one another.
Workshops are a lot better in that regard.
Yeah.
And it, it's designed for exchange and answer to questions.
Right.
So I think on some of these ordinance changes, it really might be appropriate to do a workshop. It might extend it, but most of these things are terribly impactful to the, to the citizens. And you want to talk about transparency, that's a good way to address that. It may take a little longer, but let's get it right.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I mean, I don't disagree with that. But I think it is, in some ways, it's case by case. Some, they're going to be-
Yeah, it is case by case.
Yes, and I can imagine with the, kind of the code work group you're going to lead, some changes are going to be shall or may, or, you know, like in other words, there's going to be clarity. And those are not going to require hearings, and, because those will be more administrative. So I, I mean, I take that in, that certain things, and I do think the notice part of this is something that we shouldn't just write on the fly. I think we should clarify it. I'd put it on a workshop, because we're really asking the public, are we notifying you well enough so that you feel part of the process? So I, I think that's a good way, following that comment, that we would handle it. And I like the workshop model for that personally, but so what I would say is-
Workshop model works.
Okay, so based on, and I know I split the agenda item, I have the right to do that, I think. So I, my, well, let's go through. What we're kind of discussing here is there's one part of B2 that we're not ready to rule on, because we don't really know exactly how we're going to do the advance notice. We have a proposal. Can we just move this to the next workshop?
Sure.
Okay? Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And what, let's direct staff at that workshop to clarify that part of the, you, you heard a lot of things tonight. Do you need any other clarification from us about direction?
No.
There's no public comment period.
Pardon me?
There's no public comment period for this, that we'll just add it to the next workshop agenda.
Yes, and in that workshop agenda, we'll ask, we'll say that it's actionable, okay?
Yeah, I'll, because what, I just want to make sure before the record closes, and Alex and the city manager and I are all on the same page, is that we want to kind of fix A6 and B1F, which are lines 73 through 75 and 124, to reflect some type of when the sign should be removed after kind of like the public hearing for the, either the planning commission or mayor and council's, kind of what you're looking at.
Right. The other item that I would look at is anything that's been sitting out there with a sign for six months plus. We need to know what those are, because I don't know where they are, and do we need to take some action?
Yeah, I agree.
Right? There's something lingering, for some, maybe it's good reason, but we need to know what they are.
And in fact, that, that sign lingering like that is probably not in compliance with the sign chapter, yeah.
It's exempt, it's a public hearing notice.
Okay, but, but I think in terms of decision-making, if there are things that we have not addressed for whatever the reason is, let's find out what they are and see what we need to do about them, okay?
Right, well, our policies, our policies don't look definitive when, when that happens. And if someone's concerned, and that stop, signs up for a very long period of time, it, it, it's irritating.
Absolutely.
It can irritate someone.
Okay, all right, so now, as part of our special meeting, there's a public comment period. So I'd like to open up to the public on what they've just heard, or any other comments they would like to make. Anybody in the room? No? Okay, anyone online? Oh, are you good? Come on up.
It's tangentially.
And just say your name again, yes.
The hub of your road, it's tangentially related, and I intended to take that up with the city planner at some point, the city planner, sorry, the city manager, and she would have come back to you, but, so, I will do that because we're scheduled to meet this week. But I've noticed in the course of looking for documentations relating to the actions of the council in particular, but also the action of the planning commission, there are lots and lots and lots of documents available online, which are drafts and which are not signed, and actions has been taken, and these draft documents have been replaced by final documents which bear the signature of the secretary of the council. And I feel that if we want this documentation to be useful, we need to have the final executed documents available online together with the drafts. Actually, I would go as far as saying that we could remove the drafts, but the drafts are interested from an historical point of view, so it probably needs to stay. But when we do research on what is the status of, you know, a certain decision, we should have the final decision with the signature of the secretary of the council on the website next to the draft. So, I will discuss this with the manager.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Any online, blue? No one online? If you're online and you want to make a comment, please raise your hand. No? Okay, do we have a motion to close the special meeting?
I'll make a motion that we close the special meeting.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, thank you public.